Good evening, I'm going to call the Willet's City Council meeting to order this May 8th at 6:31 PM and we'll begin with a pledge to the flag. Matt, would you like to introduce this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
All right, roll call please. Councilmember Connie Strong?
Here.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Present.
Hi, Mayor.
Yes.
Before we proceed into the agenda, staff is recommending that item 9A is pulled.
All right.
That will, there were several comments and questions that have been raised that we need to do some further research. This item has history that's gone back several years and we didn't know the full extent.
All right, I agree. Any objections to pulling item 9A? All right, that item will be pulled.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then the next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the posted agenda? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close public communication and move on to public matters. We have the introduction of Misty Johnson. And I'll turn it over to the, to the chamber of the podium here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'd like to introduce, my name is Lisa Kavaznik, President of the Chamber. I'd like to introduce to you Misty Johnson, who's our Chamber Coordinator.
Welcome, Misty.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to?
It's nice to meet all of you.
Do you want to tell us maybe a little bit about your, your background and involvement in the Willet's community or a community that you've been involved with?
Sure. My husband and I have a web design.
Maybe move over to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Just so that people at home can hear you as well.
My husband and I own Menda Web Design. I am part-time, he is the full, full-time front man of that. We have been doing this for well over 10 years. I have lived in Mendocino County for over 17 years. My husband's family located here in the 70s and so I'm the transplant. We have raised our children, graduated a few here, and have really enjoyed being a part of the community for all the time that we've been here. My background beside web is human resources, sales, marketing, retail, restaurant, you name it. I've had my hand in many different things over the years. I first started working in a family business at eight and a half and got my first legal job when I was 14 and a half when the permits were given out, and that was at Subway. I have been an adamant worker since then. My husband is a workaholic, we're dedicated to what we do, we love our family, but we're empty nesters, so we have a lot of time and it offers me the ability to come outside the house a bit more. So, working with the chamber and the community is a joy for me, for somebody who's been here for so long, to see so many different changes happen throughout the community. The bypass, the COVID that came through and what happened between small businesses, the schools, I, my youngest son was the second to graduate, they're graduating class during COVID, and that was a challenge. And so I've seen a lot of things happen here that I feel really committed to want to bring more and to get us on a map. Put this little beacon up in front of town to say, hey, we're here, to give us some more, you know, tourism, to get more, you know, the businesses more help to, to bring that bottom line up. And we're working on the electronic aspect right now, bringing continuity to the electronic footprint of the chamber, and many other projects. In the seven days I've been here, I've made a very large push and organized many things and I have my work cut out for me. I am eager to continue. Every day is a progress and anyone who has questions or wants to come in and say hi, by all means, please do. I'm also available between 8:00 and 8:00. You can always reach me. I make myself readily available. Businesses have a closing hour, granite B, but working with the community, working at the chamber, I don't feel it allows that closing hour. Everyone has different schedules, so, you know, I'm really easy to talk to, I'm very approachable, and you will find me knocking on many of your doors.
All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Will there be a change or maybe you can just state what the hours are for the chamber office, as some people aren't sure what the hours currently are?
Currently, the hours right now are Monday through Thursday, 10 to 4. With the skunk training, with the tourism season kind of starting off, we will be looking at extending our hours and possibly if there's a special event, we'll be open, you know, during a weekend for special events that come up. So, I mean, that's what we've got going on right now. Of course, you know, with the different events that we have happening, like the car shows coming up, we'll be not at the chamber on that Sunday, but we'll be out in the community and hope to do more of that.
Thank you.
Staging and such. So, thank you.
Let me see if any other council members have any follow-up questions? No? All right, well, welcome. We look forward to hearing new things that are happening at the chamber. We recently had a report, but we'll look forward to hearing more from you at a later date.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we have no ordinances before us today and on the consent calendar, we have one item, which is the minutes of April 24th. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I would approve.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion from Councilmember Strong and a second from Vice Mayor. Anybody from the audience want to address us on this item? No? All right, then I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez? Yes. All right, the motion carries. Monthly activity reports are generally at the second meeting of the month, so we don't have those. There's no commissions, agencies, and authority business before us, so I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Brian Bender, for his verbal report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow council members. There is no business item that I'm going to direct and present to you for your consideration tonight, just two updates. One is listed, one is not. Walter's going to help pitch hit a little bit on the second item. So, on April 27th, we had our first annual Clean Canvas event. It was exceptionally attended. I enjoyed myself. I got to actually mingle with people and interacted with young kids, which I typically don't do. But it was good. I was instructed by Taylor there to interact with the public and I did. She's trying to raise, she's trying to raise my awareness, my public persona, and that's probably going to take a lot of effort, but.
Somebody needs a period.
Yeah. Actually, like I said, it was a great day, the weather-wise, we had Chamber and Commerce weather. Lucky wasn't the following Saturday where we had two inches plus of rain. The chalk wouldn't have held up too well. We also had participation from Caltrans representatives there. Several council members and myself were interviewed for a, essentially a 90-second promotional video, which about 80 seconds of it's going to be B-roll of the event. So, they're going to really splice together our comments, so. It was, like I said, there was numerous entities and other groups that are active in the community and in the region were present. They were engaging with members of the public. It was just generally a nice welcoming, you know, first spring, nice spring day to get the people out in the public, or out, the public out into the parks, get to experience what we have, and also look at some of the improvements that we're looking to accomplish through the Clean California grant. So, Taylor is here. Make sure you knocked this one out of the park, this is your last one, so go out on a high note.
Can you just summarize it for me, Brian?
I'm sure you have, yeah. Once again, Taylor did an excellent job with organizing it, so I will let her elaborate.
Thank you, Brian, for that synopsis. I don't need these notes, I guess. My name is Taylor Boudreaux, formerly Taylor Perry. I'm the Senior City Planner for the Community Development Department, and I was here to give you the rundown of the Clean Canvas event, but Brian has done a wonderful job summarizing it. It was a really wonderful event that showcased community creativity. It was an event funded generously by Clean California, our grantor, as part of the Beautify Wilts project, the $2.77 million grant you may or may not have heard of. Very exciting. An honorable mention would be to Preston Allen. He's the grant facilitator for the local grant assistance program. He was a big help and came with his own booth to set up. That was exciting. Big shout-out to our sponsors and our collaborators. The Chamber of Commerce, first and foremost, thank you very much. Blue Zones Mendocino County, Willet's FFA. Mendocino County Public Health was there and helped with prizes and donations. Oh, I'm going to miss a couple. Bechtel Grove Middle School PTO had a barbecue.
Redwood Waste?
Redwood Waste, yes. Cold Creek Compost. If I knew that I had listed, if I were to list all of them, I would have brought it written. I think I got most of them. I apologize if there are a few I didn't mention, such as Saprina and her business. Another shout-out or a thank you to our dedicated staff members who thought that they were going to come with their families to paint chalk in the park, but ended up lending a generous hand, especially in setting up the pop-up, because those things are miserable to set up by yourself, as I learned. So, Dusty Dooley and Philip Davidson, who's not here, our code enforcement officer and family, thank you. What else? It was really well-received by the community. In the following days after the event, we received some comments about how unique it was to have an educational and a green-themed event to celebrate Earth Week. So, we're already planning, or our department is already planning for next year, being bigger and better and having more ability to advertise it in advance to get even more vendors. So, it will be an annual event, very excited about that. Thank you, Brian, for helping manage the booth and interacting with kids and.
All the kids were unharmed, they left.
They were. Yes, they were very eager to get their chalk and Brian was very helpful and sat there smiling the entire time. So, thank you, Brian.
It's known to happen.
I was very proud as your PR manager. Also Connor Sack, our city planner, was instrumental in the planning, the outreach, organizing with all the vendors. That was the sole task done by him to facilitate that. He did a wonderful job, so thank you, Connor. I'll have him re-watch this meeting so he can hear me think of. Is there anything else, Brian? I believe that was kind of a summation of the event.
No, like I said, it was, it was well-received throughout the community. It accomplished what it was intended to do and it established a good baseline to proceed and move forward.
The only thing it was missing on that windy day were some kites.
That's right. That was the one thing Brian didn't touch on, was how windy it was. I think everybody at their booths were struggling.
I wish that I had bought some kites to talk about, you know?
Right.
Wind and energy and.
But other than that, it was a beautiful day and we were happy to.
We did learn that bubbles do carry very well in the wind.
They do. There were some chalk artists that got some bubbles to the face. My apologies if you're listening. Well, if we're wrapping up that item, I do have one other topic and I'm sure some of you may know, possibly that this will be my last council meeting as I'm taking a new chapter in my career, and I just want to extend a very gracious thank you to each and every one of you for this opportunity, for all the learning lessons. A thank you to my colleagues who have taught me many lessons and the friends that I've made and for being a mentor to me. So, thank you all. And I will happily extend my personal information if you'd like to remain in contact.
Taylor, you've done a fantastic job for the city of Willet's. We're all really, really proud of the work that you've done while you're here and have a lasting impact on, on things that are already in the works.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm very excited for the future of Willet's. There's a lot of exciting things happening, so, thank you.
Thank you.
See you on the trail.
Thank you. The other item is a update on our pavement preservation plan for '23. That project has been in earnest for a couple of weeks now. It is moving along extremely well. No major issues have been identified, or the contractor, Budalier, has been working well with the neighborhood and with staff, and Walter Colan is here to give you an update. He has been managing the project for the city.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Yeah, giving an update on the '23 PPP pavement preservation project that we've been working on. It is actually going very smoothly. We've had a lot of really great feedback from the neighborhood. There's been no major delays. We're on schedule, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. As of this date, we've probably got about 75% of the concrete board in the areas with sidewalks, APDA ramps, and drainage. Next week, by the end of next Friday, Bosco Bell will be totally paved and that whole stretch will be paved. We're going to have a two to three-week delay for South Lenore. We have some water issues there and stuff, and especially the last two inches of rain, there's some soft spots, but we're still going to be ahead of schedule and it's anticipated to be done a week after 4th of July completed and have all of those paved, striped, and all the sidewalks and drainage done. There is some work we'll do. We'll see how we're doing money-wise. We're putting a little bit of extra money onto South Lenore to crown it a little bit better for drainage, but we have some areas that we'll be patching over on Bechtel Road. So, that'll complete the project. So, it's all going very smoothly.
Councilmember Connie?
I do have a question.
Yes.
So, you mentioned 4th of July completion date. Both of those streets, Bosco Bell and South Lenore, tend to get heavy traffic and the Exodus from the parade.
Yeah.
Will they be open for?
They'll be open, yes. That, that's why they don't want to do a tear-out right before then and stuff to disrupt it. It'll be right after 4th of July, they'll do the final paving on South Lenore.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Sounds very descriptive and we've been following, particularly at our Transportation Committee level, hearing the, all of the ins and outs of this project, so.
Yeah, like I said, a lot of great feedback. People are stopping by and actually very happy it's being done in the neighborhood, so it's been very nice to you.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, so yeah, 2023, and now we're going to be moving on to talk about 2024, which is our next item before us, which is the To Adopt a Resolution authorizing advertisement of the 2024 Pavement Preservation Project. Project number 2024-01, with an engineer's estimated cost of $975,431.48, with $400,000 expected to be reimbursed to the city from the State of California's SB1 funds. And I'll turn it back over to you, Walter.
So, just to clarify, so that amount is with contingency? So, when it goes out to bid, it'll go out at, it is further than the report, 886, 755, 89. That's our engineer's estimate. So, that's just the high that with contingency. But we're expecting when it goes out to bid to be less, 886, 755, 89. So, that area that's going to be on the next bid will be the areas around Walnut and Laurel down, down over there, and finishing up Blosser, which is a project that was a couple of years ago, there's a section that'll be done there. It's going to encompass a vegetated swale, new sidewalks, ADA compliant ramps, and a full repave throughout the school. So, it's going to make a big difference in the conditions there at the school and with drainage in that area. And it'll finish up on Blosser Lane, work that was done a couple of years ago, finish up a section from Highway 20 through the bridge area that's in very poor condition.
That was one question that I had is, as you get to the bridge, so are we paving over the bridge?
Yeah.
Are you stopping, you're stopping short of it on?
Yeah, it's concrete and then there's a section between the bridge and Franklin Street that'll be done there into that intersection.
That's, okay. As I was looking over, I just wanted to.
You said Laurel, I think you mean Locas?
Locas, sorry.
Okay.
We've been looking at maps for planning '25 and '26, so I can, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, question, two questions. One is regarding the SB1 money. Given the state's budget woes, is that money pretty safe for us?
Yes. Yeah, we're working on that. It seems very solid. We don't have, we, I don't anticipate any issues with that at all.
And in the area in front of the school there that's getting get paved, any sort of traffic calming measures planned for that area there? I would look at the plans, I really couldn't, I'll be honest with you, I couldn't tell.
No, there's, there's a bulge out, bulge out at the corners and everything, that'll slow it down. It is a school, so it's posted as such. It's going to provide a lot safer and easier parking for the buses for unloading and loading right now, it's just a dirt area. The buses will be a little bit further out, I think it'll be more noticeable, and I hope that is a sort of a calming effect. And looking at the street, whether we've monitored it, we don't have a lot of high-speed traffic through there. People are pretty good around the school, so, in further away, it speeds up and everything, but we, we don't have any necessarily like speed bumps or anything here to, you know?
I just wondered if they're at the cross, where there's a crossing thing that's going to be put in, whether that was going to be raised at all or whether it's.
No, there was no plans for that. We could look at that if that becomes an issue or something.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
This staff report also includes East Commercial Street. Can you go over what's going to be happening on?
There are some sections that are in poor condition and those will be last. We're going to focus on the area around the school first. Those are still planned, but if, Kate, you know, if we run into any issues, we may hold off on a few of those and make sure we get the project done around the school properly. So, and we could go into cost overruns, but we're going to assess how necessary those are. We're going to look at first the school project and get that done. That's going to be the later part of the project, yes.
And what exactly on East Commercial is being considered?
There's some areas that the asphalt is in very poor condition and breaking up and stuff, and those are going to be patched in areas pretty large.
Digouts.
Okay, so like in front of the Wreck Grove or City Park or?
All along through here, it's like several sections through here that we've identified. There's just in various places along the way here.
Okay.
And so we, we're going to take the worst of it and try to get this out of the way before they deteriorate more.
It's not continuous. It's going to be isolated. If we get to that point, there will be, the areas will be delineated and marked, you'll see pavement markings, and we'll get the square footage.
Okay. And I understand that the area in front of the school is the priority, but I also just want to make sure that Blosser Lane is definitely on the?
Oh, definitely.
On the docket. I get so many comments from people who say that on their way to the transfer station, you know, everything's rattling out of their vehicle because of the condition of that road.
Franklin, the intersection Franklin, Franklin is not, that's going to be later on down the road, but no, it'll make a big difference and stuff. That'll finish up that whole stretch through there.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it'll be great.
All right, do we have any members of the public that would like to address us on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back up to council.
I would like to move staff recommendations.
Thank you, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor?
I just want to make a comment that when I was at the MCAG Town Hall for the CTC in Fort Bragg, the city of Fort Bragg acknowledged that they were just now starting their 24 PPP, so we shouldn't feel that we're behind. We're in league with our neighboring cities, so.
And can I make one more thing? You were saying about the viability of the funds. Those were approved at the end of March, so the $400,000 has been approved already.
Through Caltrans.
Through Caltrans. So, we've already received confirmation that that's approved money and that's.
All right, moving on to item 9C. Adopt a resolution calling for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and consolidate and request the county clerk to conduct said election with the statewide general election. And I'll turn it over to Dolores Peterson, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember and, Mayor and councilmembers, November 5th is the general elections and we do have three seats up for election this year. The first day to take out packets is July 15th and they need to be turned in by August 9th. So, I am asking that we adopt this resolution calling for the election and requesting election services from the county registrar of voters.
Right. Questions at home?
Can you just repeat that the papers are ready July 15th?
July 15th is the day you can pick them. They can be picked up, they can be turned in anytime between July 15th and August 9th.
August 9th, and that's the deadline? That doesn't that deadline? Does the deadline get extended if?
If no one applies, there's, there is an extension. I believe I have the date right here. The candidate filing period would be extended if an incumbent is, doesn't apply to the August 10th through 14th, yeah, 10th through 14th, it's extended to those days.
So, that is, if any of the incumbents don't?
Do not.
Don't apply, then the other people get another week's. Okay. And, and that includes some, a petition, I guess, of like, you're supposed to get 25 signatures?
I believe it's 25 to 30 signatures.
And that has to be residents of, within the city limits?
Within city limits, yes.
Okay, great.
No work trails, no valley, it has to be within city limits, our boundaries.
Thank you.
All right, anybody from the public have anything that they would like to address the council on this matter? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back up here. Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I still move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'll give a second. All right, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, motion carries once again, 5-0. We have no department reports this evening unless we have a department that would like to make any special announcements. I'm seeing none, so we'll move right along to city council announcements, communications and reports. And we'll start at this end of the table with Councilmember Connie.
Let's see, I attended MCAG meeting this Monday down in Ukiah. We had a long meeting, it was a little over four hours. We had a budget workshop, so we reviewed the budget for next year, and it should come back to the board at the next meeting for adoption. We also approved the overall work project for '24, '25. Today, this morning, I attended the museum advisory board meeting. The advisory board is working to craft a letter to the county board of supervisors, thanking them for our productive discussion at yesterday's council or supervisors' meeting, and requesting that they work with museum staff to create a press release, sharing with the public the goals of converting the museum format to nonprofit rather than county administration. Our hope is that by reaching out to the public and letting them know the changes that are in the works for the museum, we can generate more interest in community support for the museum, which we think is there, we just need to tap into it. And.
That's pretty much it. Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Okay, so I was not able to attend the Sonoma Clean Power 10th Anniversary Board Meeting and Party that they had down in Santa Rosa. I will eventually get caught up on what was, I think things are going really well there as far as the administration of Sonoma Clean Power and their budget, even though the utility rates are, you know, causing sticker shock on everybody, but Sonoma Clean Power is trying to keep theirs below PG&E rates, so that's been successful. Solid Waste Management Authority had a meeting, which I inadvertently missed, and so did one of the other members of that board, so they are calling a special meeting to get more into-depth with the administration and finances of Emswab, the Solid Waste Management Authority. That's going to be on May 30th at 9:00 in the morning. I will probably attend that from, from here, so if anyone's interested in, in that. And then EDFC will be meeting, I think, right after our next city council meeting, the Thursday, right after that. I think that was, those are my main agencies that I represent. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Karen Franger, we'll go back.
I'm sorry, I forgot I had one other thing about the museum. If you all recall, the museum received an endowment from the Bitten Vender Trust last year. That money was transferred at the request of the museum advisory board and with the support of the Willetts City Council to the community foundation. We did get a report this morning that it has earned $75,000 in interest since we did that, so it's doing what it's supposed to do in building the nest egg for the museum. And we were all, the museum advisor board was very happy that it's with the community foundation and will be generating some additional funds for museum operations next year.
All right, vice mayor.
Well, Larry's a little shy, but we did do the water wastewater meeting on April 26th, and I don't think there was a lot there more of an update. I think we got told we had $7 million in the water fund and $5 million wastewater or down?
Yeah.
Oh, the other way around. Five million in water and $7 million in waste. And we got a little update on the flushing. I think, is it East Valley that still needs to?
There's several areas. They were just doing a round city hall this last week and everything else.
All right, and we have not heard anything more from Pine Mountain on the MOU and Sherwood staff, Sherwood, Sherwood Reservation staff as?
Correct. We're still waiting.
We're still waiting from them. And same thing with the Little Lake Mobile Home Park situation. We haven't got anything back. And you said that it's going to be, what, May 8th or something, the steel pipe replacement that got kicked down?
Yes, we're, that's going to be coming to the track, I believe, yes.
Hopefully on the 22nd.
22nd, we're trying to get that out.
And I think the last thing was the steel tank that that was still, you were still looking at.
And that's, that will probably, it seemed you were doing a final inspection by then.
And I think that that was it, so wasn't brutal. Lot, lot of meat at that meeting, but we still had it. I did attend the Vega Cities meeting on May 3rd, and it was up at Rio Del, and they actually had a nice program, a community NGO long-term earthquake recovery. When the earthquake happened up in, in Rio Del, one of the things that happened is given the size of the earthquake and the amount of people affected, it didn't trigger a state declaration. And so they basically said, given certain events, especially when it comes to small floods or landslides, things like that, there may not be a state declaration. And it has to do with FEMA rules, and the state follows some of those FEMA rules, and so there were a lot of people that were kind of left, kind of holding the bag, so to speak. So what they ended up doing is the county up there and their folks up there ended up working with a nonprofit group that basically sought private funding and, and to help do loans. So I thought it was kind of unique, and they were kind of trying to educate everybody about the viability of bringing that elsewhere, and that we might be thinking of something like that in our communities just because of that threshold that FEMA has, so. A lot of foundations, they said it had to do with the type of earthquake it was, a lot of foundations just kind of, houses just literally just slid off their foundation and they were, you couldn't live in them. And so a lot of the houses were red-tagged, and they were able to activate Red Cross Sarah for temporary housing, but long-term, they had to do something, and they're still wrapping that up. Then we got a tour of a marijuana grow that they had in the city, and they apparently were kind of like us, very cautious about how they dealt with the marijuana situation. I think they have two dispensaries and, and this one, I think they've got two or three grow situations, but, and they, we toured this one. It, it was impressive and big and smelly, so I won't go into further than that, but it seemed like it was well-run and security-wise. They did give us an update on retail theft legislation. Apparently they, a lot of the stuff we were going to cover, everything got upended at the last minute, so Sarah had to get some stuff printed up at the last minute for us. But there's going to be, I think it's AB 1772 bill that's going to, they're going to send out an action alert, or they did, and request that we support that. And there's a big push on the state level. They don't want to support, I guess, the governor and the ex-governor don't want to do anything that is going to send people back to jail, but there's this big push with businesses being hit on retail theft, and so there's, the retail folks are still wanting something done, and a lot of cities are wanting something done, so. I've got more information if you guys are interested.
So what would that legislation do? Would it increase the, would they have to pay a bigger penalty?
Yeah, and, and also it would, let me see here, the bill would require the Department of Justice to conduct a study to determine the number of misdemeanor convictions for theft offense. There are a couple, it's kind of a group of bills that are supposed to.
So is it focused, though, do you think, on repeat offenders?
Yeah, I think the whole purpose is it's not to, it's not to rewrite some of the changes that happened, it's to kind of tighten up some things. And so I, I think that they're hoping that they can get it passed at the state level because they feel that anytime something comes up, it's being shot down at the state level. And so they're hoping to, to repackage it in such a way that it will pass, so. I don't know how else to, I'm trying to encapsulate in the time I have here, but, so, but, and I'm not sure if you guys get Sarah's stuff or not.
We do, but I didn't see any hang on that, on that particular topic.
So, all right, I will give it to Dolores, or I'll try and get it to you guys that way.
Okay.
And that's all. Oh, I did have LAFCO, and we, we did our preliminary budget, and we did a water, trying to think, it's a, it's a small water, I'm trying to think, I didn't bring my notes for that, but we covered those two things at the meeting, and that was it. So, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for going. I know that's a drag. I attended the Clean Canvas event that we talked about, and then I serve on the MCAG Transit Productivity Committee, and we met for a couple of hours last week in Ukiah and received some big news. As we're seeing more and more cars converting over to, to electric cars, which is great for the environment, we're also seeing a significant decline in the taxes that are available for road repairs, public transportation, and things of that like. So MTA, we, we are now being told that we're going to have to slash a million dollars from our budget, which is a huge number. And the even more difficult news is it's not going to look better the next year. It's likely to be a million dollars again, so it's not, we can't use, it's not a one-time fix. And how do you slash a million dollars from your budget when the state has also set some high goals for us? For example, we're supposed to be converting our fleet to all-electric, but the only way that we can foresee in the short run being able to solve that million-dollar gap is essentially by not buying an all-electric bus to be able to come up with the money. So we, we have these ambitious goals from the state, then we have a lack of funding, and so the discussion really focused around like, how are we going to survive for the next, say, two to five years until the state has another plan in place that can support the ambitious goals that they've put before us? I don't know how we're going to continue to provide services, and I worry, as we're talking about local roads and our funding source, we're all, you know, it all comes back to the gas tax, and if we're not, if we don't have this gas tax and it's dwindling, we're not going to have the money we need to be able to take care of, of the routes that we travel in our community. And it isn't just the roads that is funded by the gas tax. There's many things. There's, for example, the Clean Canvas event that funds the parks, there's public transportation, there's many things that are funded by the gas tax. So that's concerning. And then out of that money that MTA receives from, from that tax, the senior centers are also funded. So we provide transportation to the gen, and I, when I say we, I mean MTA, because I'm the chair for MTA. We provide transportation to the general public, but we contract with senior centers specifically to provide transportation for disabled and for seniors. And so approximately $400,000, aside from the million, will be cut from the, the four senior centers, which is a good chunk of money. So I called Richard Baker as soon as I got out of the meeting and said, hey, I have some really difficult news, and we're going to be having some tough conversations. And we started brainstorming, talking about, you know, like, well, what can, what opportunities do senior centers have? Are there other pots of money that they can apply for? And the, and the, the difficult conclusion is that senior centers have no other venue when it comes to transportation-type taxes to be able to, to recoup some of this money. So our local senior center is going to need help more than ever. I know that when I talked to Richard Baker, he said that it's going to be well over $40,000 hit to their budget, and again, this is ongoing, so, you know, fundraising and fundraising just isn't going to cut it. They're going to, they're going to need some help. Yes.
So I was wondering if, isn't the gas tax actually just a flat amount? It doesn't appear, it's not a percent of the price of the gallons of gas?
We don't receive a flat amount.
No, I don't mean what, what you receive, but I think that, in either case, it doesn't matter. If, if gas tax funds are not being generated at the same level that they used to be because of more electric vehicles, I'm wondering if anyone's been in conversation with Mike McGuire and other people in Sacramento to fix that hole that they, that.
There are, no, that's a good question, and there are conversations happening, and there is a plan that is in the beginning stages. They're talking about, you know, if you have an electric vehicle, there could be a tax that relates to how, how many miles you drive your vehicle. But we're talking about now, what are we going to do? And that plan might not be fully developed and implemented and start collecting for, you know, two, three, four, five years. We really don't know. So do we cut services to the public? You know, do we cut public transportation? Because we're already seeing a push. We're already hearing people say, you know, now that COVID, you know, is winding, winding down, we call it over, it's not technically over, but people are wanting to see services reinstated, and MTA is finally at the point where we have reinstated, we're fully staffed for the first time since COVID began. We're, we're fully staffed, and we reinstated our roots and all of our roots, and now we receive this big bombshell, and so we have to cut somewhere. So we may have to, you know, end up cutting roots and laying people off, or we take something that we have saved and worked hard or that we've allocated, for example.
And the other, the other source, and again, these are not like instant fixes necessarily, but, but the federal push to do more environmental programs and to subsidize going green and all of that, there should be some pots of money to fill the gap that is, is coming down to those least able to sustain it.
Should be.
Oh, I'm just saying, it has to, I think it, it needs to be, there needs to be an appeal to the funding sources rather than just cutting the budgets, because that's going to be very, very painful and reduce services to those who need it most. So I'm just, you know.
Oh, trust me, there, there is certainly an appeal, and I know that Greta serves on MCAG, and I'm sure you're hearing about this as well.
Yeah, so the fiscal cliff is something that public transit agencies all over the state are up against. Ridership of public transportation plummeted during COVID, and it has not recovered. It's recovered incrementally, but it's nowhere near what it was pre-pandemic. So across the state, public transportation is suffering due to lack of, what is it called? The box ratio, how much fair money they're bringing.
Fair box ratio.
Fair box ratio. So it, it's definitely something that's being discussed at the state level. You know, everyone and everyone is, is facing this problem, and they're looking for creative ways to offset those losses. One of the things in Mendocino County that we're realizing is we do have the new SB 125 funds that are infusing over $11 million into our county over the next, I think it's four years, and that will be part of the MCAG budget and is essentially what's going to be keeping MCAG whole, and some of that will make its way to MTA. So I, I understand the concerns that MTA has, and they're, and they are totally valid, but I do believe that minds are at work on trying to solve this problem, and it, you know, it's going to be rocky, but I do think that, that there will be, there will be light at the end of the tunnel.
So we did have discussion about those funds and whether or not, because written in there, you can only use a certain percentage. I think it's something like 10%, can only be used for operating expenses.
Right, and I think they're looking at revising that because of the needs.
So currently, as it stands, if there was a revision, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
But currently, as it stands, that 10% is, is only going to be a small portion of what we need because we had already applied for 10% for the operating funds. We'd already, already targeted that as part of our budget for this year, so, yeah. And the rest of the 125 funding that you were talking about has been allocated for the, the transit center was a, was a big, and then a pilot program to go to Covelo. And we're still moving forward cautiously with the pilot program because we have that separate set, that separate pot of money that can only be used for that pilot program.
I, I think it's an interesting time for all the agencies because so many of us saw a bump during the COVID years when everyone expected things to sort of bottom out. Instead, we saw the opposite, but now things are getting back to a pre-pandemic normal and in some cases not recovering. And so we are seeing, even here in the city, we're seeing a dip in our tax revenues, our sales tax revenues. Certainly, sales, our gas tax is diminishing, so there's going to be having, I, I think legislators at the state level as well as locally are going to have to find some creative ways to keep going because it's, it's ever, ever shifting.
And then we were just talking about the 125 fund, though. Even if we were able to shift some of those funds and alleviate some pressure on MTA, that, that money can't carry over to the senior centers. So I'm very concerned, not just for MTA, but for senior centers, because they're going to be hit even harder than we are, even though ours is a large amount.
Makes me glad that this council decided to offer an extra $25,000 from our ARPA funds to our local senior center.
I had called.
It's a one-time deal, but at least it'll help them this year.
I had called Richard Baker and told him what had happened after the council meeting, and then the next day I called and gave him the thank you. I'm like, I'm sorry. Yeah, so. Now's a good time to donate to the senior center.
That's true.
And then my last bit of news is that when I first got on the council in 2016, when Adrian Moore was the city manager, we put together a Visit Willetts Tourism Board, and during the time that we had the tourism board, tourism board, the Mendocino County Library had done an exhibit, Main Street, Then and Now, and after the exhibit was over, the county was at a point where they were trying to get rid of things in the storage area because it was very overloaded back there. And so the Visit Willetts Tourism Board and myself as the president that year took on all of the storyboards and all of the history, and I had been storing it at my business for several years, and just recently, the museum's taken up an interest from the people who created the storyboards, and those storyboards are now being distributed at businesses here in town, and I'm excited to see that that, that the, all that history from those boards will be put out and about at different businesses. So I'm, I'm excited about that.
Nice.
Yeah, so I look forward to seeing those as you go for a stroll in downtown Willetts here by the end of this year. Hopefully, most businesses will have theirs up. Any other good in welfare?
If, if anybody out there likes to sing or likes to hear other people sing, May 14th, the college choral class is giving a concert over at the, at the Willetts High School Auditorium. I think it's at 7 o'clock, and it's a free concert. Their repertoire is really nice, so anyway, that's one thing. The very next day, on Wednesday, May 15th, at 5 o'clock, we'll have a few people, I don't know how many, will show up at the Redwoods right here at City Park, and we'll learn a few songs, and then we will go down Main Street and sing some songs, and people might join us. We'll, we'll do some sing-alongs. So anyway, if you enjoy singing, Willetts is becoming very musical. It is. It is, it is very musical.
All right. Any other Good and Welfare?
I do have an item, Madam Mayor. I just want to almost have a public service announcement. So in the last couple of days, I'm sure most of the individuals in this room or throughout the city received a various notices from PG&E about a potential power outage for this weekend, this weekend. Just confirmation, PG&E has canceled that event. They will be reissuing and moving ahead with their planned improvements that require the power outage. And that is probably about two, three, maybe four weeks out. They will do a much more elaborate campaign of getting notices out, direct mailings. There's backstory here. We don't need to go into it. But they're, they have a serious problem with their grid system that they're going to have to address. They will plan the work and then get the notice out. So all the agencies, residents, business owners, have the opportunity to respond and prepare accordingly.
So Brian, I know that you say that there'll be a preparation. Will we be part of that? Will we be in a position where we will offer any sort of places for people to charge phones or anything? Or is this going to be a real quick? It sounded like it was going to be, you know, starting Saturday X till the next day.
Yeah, it's going to be several hours, midnight, early morning hours. You know, we didn't really address concerns about charging phones or providing that type. We were more worried about the battery backups for our infrastructure components, streetlights, make sure all our allied agencies are in the loop, you know, county OES, fire district, law enforcement. You know, this was a big issue, the clinic as well, the hospital.
So it was going to be citywide then?
It was going to be road trails, city, the valley, you know, 14, 15,000 people.
Well, I'm really grateful that the city staff took a look at this, asked some hard questions because that would have been pretty significant. I know when I received my message saying that there was going to be a power outage, I didn't assume that our entire community would be in the dark overnight. I just assumed it was my block.
Yeah, same thing with me.
My block that the power would be out. And I did receive.
A phone call today.
A phone call and a text message today notifying me that that was canceled and there.
So PG&E won't be releasing further information, details, how to proceed through the outage. They will have provisions in place.
All right. Is there anybody from the public that has any questions or comments on the councilmember comment reports? All right. We've had Good and Welfare and we have no closed session this evening. This is a short, short meeting for us this evening. It's a.
The next three to four meetings will make up for it. Budget sessions too.
All right.
We have Manuel be the star.
Well, Happy Mother's Day for everybody that's a mom out there.
Thank you. All right. 7:24.